Welcome, everyone. We're glad to see you all here. It is 5:30. We are in the boardroom on Legacy Campus on the Thursday, the 17th of November, 2022. We're glad to see so many people here at our board meeting. We don't usually have such a great turnout. We'll begin with roll call, starting with Jared.
Jared Black, business administrator.
Jeff Nielsen, board member.
Chris Corcoran, board member.
Kathy Christensen, board member.
Terry Rhodes, board member.
Roger Pulsford, board member.
Steve Norton, superintendent.
Randall Bagley, board member.
Larry Jepson, board member.
Thank you. And the pledge and mission statement will be led by Chris Corcoran. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission is to educate students for success in a changing world.
Thank you, Chris. And one of our favorite parts of the agenda is recognitions. Up next, so first on recognitions, we have Green Canyon High School Girls Tennis and Band Recognitions presented by Principal John Anderson.
Thank you, Superintendent. I apologize for not overdressing, underdressing, whatever you want to call it, helping my daughter move and just getting here. So I'm just excited to be here and to be able to recognize these two groups. Let's have the tennis team come up first. Tennis team and coaches, come on up. All those that are here with the tennis team and those coaches. As they're coming up, I'll just tell a little bit about this amazing group of individuals right here. In 10-region matches, these girls went 10-0. All of their varsity players had undefeated individual seasons of 10-0. At their region tournament, all the varsity and all the JV took first in their positions. And as they went down to state, they pretty much had state in the bag before they got to state. But they got down there and scored almost twice as many points as the next closest team. Just did an amazing job. And every single one of the girls and the varsity advanced on to the finals at state as well. So very impressive. Their varsity team consists of a sophomore, singles, and state finalist Bailey Hubner. Where are you at, Bailey? Step forward. A singles, second singles, a junior and state finalist, Liz Murray. You gotta step forward. There you go. A junior and state, let's see. Third singles, a junior and state champion, Emma Murray. And doubles, a senior and two-time state champion, Olivia Phillips. And her partner, freshman and state champion, Tori Jepson. And a second double is a sophomore and state champion, Carly Nielsen, and her partner and senior, three-time state champion, Maren McKenna. So this is an amazing group of girls doing an amazing job in tennis. And man, I can't say enough good about them. So. Yep, you girls gotta get a pitcher here. And while they're lining up for a pitcher, I just want to thank their coaches. John and Camille, thank you for all the work that you guys have put into the program to make it such a great success. Thank you.
John, before they step down, can we have the girls who didn't get announced say who they are, please?
Yes, I'll probably just pass the mic down. And they can, I'm not sure.
Do you get yours started?
What position we played?
Yeah.
In like our region match, what we went overall?
Yeah.
I'm Kaitlyn Reader. I was JV third singles, and I went 24-0 this season.
I'm Macy Huish. I am JV first singles, and I went 28-1 this season.
My name's Ayesuaka. I'm first JV doubles, and I went 22-2 this season.
I'm Caitlin Wood. I was on the practice team, and I don't exactly remember what I was.
I'm Hannah Nelson, and I was on the practice team, and I went 6-1.
And that's everybody else?
That's awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you tell us who the coaches are?
John and Camille. I'm sorry, John, I don't know John's last name. Mickelson, thank you. I know it, but I drew on a blank. And Camille Johnson, thank you. All right, we also have band. And we'll let them make their way up here as well. So this year marks kind of a big event for Green Canyon Band. They applied and went up to 5A competition this year and took state as a 5A school or classification. And so this is the sixth year in a row that they have taken state. Well, every year is Green Canyon High School. So this year, they won eight first-place trophies, 23 caption awards, which are individual trophies for different pieces of the bigger picture. And at the Bands of America competition as well, they took first place in their classification. So just an amazing job. And man, it was impressive to go and watch them. I was, they performed today at the school for the students. And as they performed, I leaned over to somebody and said, "I don't think I remember one of the girls in the color guard," thank you, "in the color guard, drop anything." Somebody got tangled up once or something. But in multiple performances on that weekend, it was just impressive. Just an amazing group. So congratulations to this group here. And this, this is a very small representation of the band because there's about 150 individuals. So I'm going to pass the mic down. They can introduce themselves.
My name is Adele Keller. I am band president.
I'm Chase Castleman. I was the drum captain and the center snare.
I'm Joseph Gunther. I was the pit assistant section leader this year.
I'm Brayden Guinness, and I was a bass clarinet section leader and in the band council this year.
I'm Jake Anderson. I'm the director at Green Canyon.
I'm Emily Densley, and I'm a percussion director.
And Emily had, Emily and the percussion crew had an exceptional win. When it states they beat out Highland in the percussion piece, right?
Yeah.
In the captain piece. So congratulations to the band.
Emily, did I teach you?
Yes.
Okay. Good to see you.
Thank you, Green Canyon. Next up, we have Mountain Crest High School Girls Soccer and Band Recognizations presented by Principal Terry Cutler.
There it is. Thank you. It's my honor and my privilege to honor and recognize our band program and our girls soccer program this evening. I'm going to start with band because we have some of our students here tonight that are performing in our opening musical tonight. So if I could have band come up, please. So I'm going to turn the time over to our band director, Joel Yoder. But I want to just mention, we start watching these kids practice in the summer. And from the very first performance until we go to state, to watch that transformation that happens with repeated practice and all the time and effort that they put in, just amazing things. Mountain Crest Band took first place at the state competition this year, and we're just so proud of them. Thanks, Joel.
So as we just heard, that these guys, just like Green Canyon and every other band in the valley here, works tremendously hard and it's so much fun to watch them progress throughout the year. And the Mountain Crest Band has a wonderful group of seniors this year, and brought a few of the seniors along, and have them a chance to introduce themselves. But this band would not be as successful as it is without the student leadership here. So I'm going to give a chance to have you meet our drum majors and other student leaders.
Hi, my name is Ethan Dennison. I am the main drum major of the Mountain Crest Band, and I am also the band president.
Hi, I'm Colton Bennett. I'm the assistant drum major, and I guess I'm vice president.
I'm Elena Byrd. I'm in the color guard.
I'm Cozette Cannon, and I was the clarinet section leader and a part of the band council.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you. And now, can we have girls soccer come up, please? Coach, that includes you. Come on up. There he is. So first, I'd like to introduce you to two of our coaches. Our head coach, Justin Buse, and assistant coach, wave, Suzie Iverson, because you look like one of the kids. So again, I'm going to turn the time over to Coach Buse just to give you some statistics. But what an incredible year we have had with girls soccer. And you'll see that when you hear some of the statistics. But back-to-back state championships for Mountain Crest Girls Soccer. Just a great group, worked great together. Couldn't get enough of the games, went to a lot of games, very exciting. So I do want you to hear some of the statistics from this group, though.
Okay, well, I didn't know I was going to do this, but see if I can remember them all. These guys worked hard all season, and we play in a really tough region with all the schools here in the valley. They're all really, really good and really competitive. We started out playing against some of the St. George teams in the preseason, and we ended up going 15-0 against 4A, no, 13-0 against 4A teams. Never got scored on by anybody in 4A. Gave up seven goals all season. And they were only to 5- and 6A teams that went to the championship. And one of those, and our only losses, we were 17-3 on the season. We're in shoot, we lost two shootouts and then in a last-second goal against Bonneville. Our defensive line shut down every single team that we played in 4A. And it's pretty amazing to have that many games without a goal scored on us. And also, that many shutouts. We had 13 consecutive shutouts and 15 shutouts overall. So really amazing. And these girls, they show up, they worked hard, and they'd stay late every day at practice, working hard, even after we left. So hats off to these guys. They're awesome. Then we're going to have these guys introduce themselves really quick.
I'm Haley. I'm the goalie.
I'm Bentley, and I'm an outside back.
I'm Hadley, and I'm a forward.
I'm Summer, and I'm an outside back.
I'm Raleigh, and I'm a center back.
I'm Addie. I'm a forward.
I'm Hadley, and I'm a goalie.
I'm Macy, and I'm a defender.
I'm Miley, and I'm attacking mid.
I'm Ally, and I'm a wing.
I'm Haley, and I'm a defender.
I'm Megan, and I'm a wing.
I'm Caitlin, and I'm a wing.
I'm Jade, and I'm a center back.
They already introduced me. Suzie?
Just with those 13-0 shutouts in region and state, a statistic I thought was kind of cool was we outscored our opponents 40-0. So I thought that was kind of cool.
Thanks, Mountain Crest. Next up, we have Ridgeline High School Girls Volleyball Recognition with Principal Doug Snow.
So I just wanted John to know I was moving my daughter and mowing the lawn, but I always do that in a suit. So next time, I expect, you know. So I'm going to actually turn some time over to the coaches here just a second. But I just want to tell you guys that this is an impressive group of young ladies. We'll talk about the athleticism and their accomplishments on the volleyball court. But I want to just spend a minute and talk to you about this being such a great example to the rest of the school and the service that they do. Many examples, but one of the things they do every year is they show up the first week of school, and they go to all the teachers, and the teachers sign up. They'll go into their rooms, help them set up their room for the year, make copies, do a variety of things. And that's just one of many service projects that these young ladies do every year, and they set a great example. They're some of our best students in the building. And they're positive. I watch as they play. I go to sometimes sneak in, watch a couple minutes of practice. They love each other. They're kind. And they get after it, and they're competitive. And they have that drive. But I just appreciate that they're such good citizens and good examples. So that's the first thing I wanted to want to go. So Coach Roden, J.C. Roden, and assistant Dana Brown. I've known these guys for a long time. I was actually teaching when J.C. was a student, so I've known her. She was always a model of good behavior. Exactly. And but back then, just a competitor, so this is not a surprise. So this is their second-in-a-row state championship, and they did it in dominating style. And it was just a pleasure to watch. But I'm going to turn the time over to Coach Roden and have them, have her introduce her team. But again, I just want to thank you ladies for a marvelous season, but especially for the example you set for the rest of the school.
I'm J.C. Roden. I'm the head coach. I've been head coach for three years. And these are six of our 40 girls. And although we wish all of them could be here, we, these are the six that could come. We do, we run our program a little bit differently. So we value, we have four areas of concentration, which are athletics, academics, character development, and community involvement. And that's how we feel that if we can have long-term success, then we will be successful overall, including on the volleyball court. The other thing is we believe in developing leadership across the board, and so we actually don't do captains. And so each of the girls will take ownership. We believe in having ownership of our actions and of our program. And so they are going to talk about our program and what we do. So, and say your name, and then.
Okay. I'm Julia Howe, and one word I would use to describe Ridgeline volleyball is confidence. We went into all our games, no matter what team we were playing, like with full confidence so that we could play our best.
I'm Mackenzie Cornia. The volleyball girls know me as Mac. I chose the word to describe our team as dedicated. We spend a lot of time in the gym. We did workouts in the mornings, even on game days. And we've put a lot of time in on our physical reps as well as our mental reps.
My name is Ellie Holland. The word I used to describe this season was competitive because we would compete with every team, even like the bigger schools, and we never ruled out winning.
My name's Gracie Cole, and my word I chose was unity because we're super close as a team. We have good chemistry, and we work great together.
I'm Livvy Davies, and the word I chose was one love. And we're super close with like all the girls. Doesn't matter like what team you're on, what age, like we're all one.
My name is Nia De Mooney, and I didn't, I, let's see, I'm thinking of a word. I think a good word to describe our team would be fun. We had the best season, and it's always fun to win. But even if we, we did have a little bit of a cold streak, but we got through it, and we just had fun the whole season, no matter what we're doing. And we just wanted to thank you guys for honoring us today and recognizing us. It's an honor and means a lot to all of us. And yes, and especially our, we just want to thank our coaches, J.C. and Dana. They taught us a lot this season, and we couldn't have done it without Mr. Snow and Mike Hansen either. So thank you, guys.
Thank you all. Do we have any parents left here from any of these teams? Please stand. We appreciate our parents and our principals. Next up in recognitions, we have Teacher of the Year awards. The first up is Skyview. And Principal Shane Jones is here to present Amanda Saltern as the Teacher of the Year for Skyview.
Well, I've only been at Skyview as a principal for like three months, and I think about a month in or maybe three weeks in, they're like, "Hey, you need to pick a principal of the year." I was like, "Uh, or a teacher of the year, sorry." And I still had some teachers, in fact, I met one today. We still have teachers that just started today that we're getting to meet. But even within the first couple of weeks, I could tell there was something special about Amanda. And so when they asked me, that was my first pick. But I thought, I better, I better do a little research. I first got to know Amanda, well, not really get to know you, but she emailed me about eight, nine years ago. Do you remember that? And she said, "Hey, if you ever have openings, I would like to, I'd like to come to Skyview." She was at Bonneville High School at that point, and she gave me a list of everything she could do. And she does just about all those for us now. And so when I got shipped to Green Canyon, Skyview did a great job and hired her from Bonneville. And so, but I've been lucky to have her this year. But one of the, I think the thing that stood out to me as a principal is within the first couple of weeks, I had some things I really wanted to get done at Skyview, and it put a lot of extra work on Amanda's plate. And her attitude and her willingness to accept that and start a new program a week into the school year was very commendable. And but when I started doing the research, that's when it was apparent that we'd made the right choice. Asking kids like, "Hey, come here, come talk to me about Mrs. Saltern." And what they would say, what her peers would say was pretty impressive. And you could tell because we needed some work out of kids. And I said, "Are we going to be able to get kids to do that?" And she's, "Oh, yeah, I'll just ask them." And that's all she has to do, is ask. She's just, she is so good at relationships with kids, and they want to do so much to, I think, make her like them. They just respect her and love being in the class. But she does our yearbook, and she just picked up and started doing our video announcements. And we'll start our video technology classes next year. And then does some medical anatomy, some physical training, and then commercial photo. So she's a, she's a jack-of-all-trades and takes care of everything for us. And just, and on top of that, besides being an incredible teacher, she's a great staff member. So it's definitely my honor to recognize her as Skyview's Teacher of the Year. Oh, yeah.
Sure, I'll say something. Yeah, I taught at Bonneville for seven years and commuted from the valley to Weaver School District. I grew up in that area and went to Fremont High. So my network was there and met my husband up here. He's a Cache Valley native. So got married in my first year of teaching and commuted down there and just slowly just, you know, waited and was trying, tried to be patient sometimes and would email and talk to principals and stuff and get my name out there. So I was very, very happy and relieved when I finally got a job in the valley. But you know, my home in Bonneville, it was such a good school that I was like, I knew it had to be the right place for me to make that big of a transition because I kind of had, you know, my things going there. So moving to Skyview exceeded my expectations, and coming to Cache County School District was definitely a move in the right direction for me. And I appreciate Shane and all the things that he's done so far at Skyview in a, to move things in a positive direction. And I really do enjoy just working with kids and getting to know them. And my aide this year, I said, "Hey, do you want to learn how to make a video?" And he said, "Sure, I'll learn." And he has just taken it and ran with it. And it's just amazing to see him have some, I don't know, as a senior, something that kind of motivates him to keep coming to school. And I don't have to ask him. He just comes, and he's there after school. Or, you know, he just takes care of things. And it's cool to see those kids just run with something. And so I appreciate this. I mean, I look at all my peers that I teach with, and I think of so many other ones that are very much fit this category. So I'm honored to receive it for Skyview this year.
Can we have everyone who's here with Amanda stand up, please? Because we know that teachers can only do their best when things are happening at home with their families. Thank you for giving us your wife and mother and daughter. Next up, we have Monty McKinnon from South Cache, presented by Principal Randy Bunyan.
Thanks, Soup. Whoa, that's a little loud. Hey, it is my pleasure. Mont, this is your number?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Thirty-five years. Can you think about the educational changes that have occurred over the past 35 years? That really is amazing. Really, truly amazing. And Mont McKenna changes with the times. And I wanted to just point out a couple of things, and I know time is short. But the climate at a school matters so much to setting the foundation for student excellence and student success. And Mont is an expert in helping out the climate at South Cache Middle School. I can't even imagine how many breakfast burritos you've made and salsas you've created for our faculties over the years. But it's probably a lot, right?
Yep.
And in addition to that, teachers often pop in the school in the evenings. And who's consistently there? and who's consistently there? Mont McKinnon. He is there. He's, he's the head of our after-school program and so he teaches all day and then he handles extra students from, from three to, uh, two forty-five to five thirty. Um, and then after that, he's doing additional work at night and this man is a dedicated and faithful, uh, and, and service-oriented employee within our district and we are grateful. We're lucky to have him at South Cache and, and proud that he is our Teacher of the Year. Mont McKinnon.
Well, I'd like to thank my family for their support because without their support, I couldn't do what I do. And as I looked around tonight, I saw a lot of the administrators that I've worked with and, um, we just have some great people. And as I was looking at some of the teachers that were nominated for Teacher of the Year at South Cache, all of them needed recognition, so, um, I love what I do and I, uh, the kids, they're wonderful. I enjoy it, so I'm just thankful to be, be working out at South Cache.
Thank you. Can we have who is here with Mont, please stand? Thank you very much. Uh, this concludes the recognition section of our agenda. So if you want to stay for the business part, you're welcome to. Uh, if you don't, now is the time to exit. Next on our agenda, we have the public input section. We have one person signed up to speak to the board. Um, Dustin Ford. And, uh, Cache County Board of Education welcomes public input from district patrons during our regular board meetings. Feedback is an important part of being responsive to our public. While the school board is unable to respond to public input during a board meeting, district administrators will be available after the public input period to hear additional feedback and respond to questions in a conference room adjacent to the boardroom. Board meetings are recorded and your comments are part of the public record. During the public comments period, the following guidelines apply. Number one, participants must sign up, which he has done. Number two, each speaker is provided three minutes to address the board. Number three, board members will not directly respond to comments or answer questions during the public input period. Number four, during public input, speakers are asked not to address personnel issues. Number five, speakers are asked to be respectful. Patrons are always welcome to submit written feedback directly to the superintendent or board members. Uh, Mr. Ford, will you come to the microphone, please?
Well, kind of makes me the bad guy again up here after all that celebration and then I'm going to get up here and complain. So my name's Dustin Ford and we live over in Mendon. We're, we're right off of the, the Cache County Box Elder line and the issue I'm here to talk about today is, is the busing situation up there. Um, and I don't know how much detail to go into right now, but I'll, I'll be fairly brief on it and it sounds like we can talk later about it. But my, my son is in seventh grade and he currently leaves the house at six twenty to get on the bus, which is obviously dark at that time. And then school starts at eight o'clock and then he gets home just right around four o'clock usually. So he's putting in just shy of a ten-hour day every day, not to mention he's, he's getting up at five thirty to get ready. The other issue with that that we have is the bus is, is just under a half a mile walk for him, which I don't have a huge problem with a bit of a walk, but he actually has to go down a trail that does not get plowed in the wintertime. I plow it myself with my four-wheeler as much as I can, but I can only keep that open at certain times. And there's really not another good alternative for him to get to that bus stop outside of that trail. There's a, it's a pretty steep hill that goes around that gets to it, but it's no, there's nowhere to walk on the side of that in the wintertime and it can be slick, so it's certainly not, not a safe option to do that. There's another family that lives up on that hill that also has to walk, walk down that same hill. So my issue there is obviously the timeframe that he's on the bus. He does have to change buses once in the morning, then twice in the afternoon, so it ends up being quite a long ride and quite, quite hectic, I guess I would say. I would like to see a bus stop by our house. There's actually a bus stop on the Box Elder County side, so it's interesting to me, I guess, that the Box Elder County side is getting precedence over the, the Cache County side. And then for my elementary school kids, it's, it's a similar problem, not quite as bad. We're only about ten to fifteen minutes from the elementary school, but they also spend an hour on the bus, morning and evening. And again, they have to walk down that, that same trail, so. We would just like to see something done to, to try to cut down on that amount of time they're spending on the bus and also have a bus stop that's a little bit more accessible for them. That, that others, they, they make about five stops on the other side in about a block and a half radius, so it seems to me like we could cut back on some of those to save on some time and some other issues, but that's kind of what I have to say before the board and if there's an opportunity to speak to an individual later, that would be, be great. Thank you.
Would you like to speak with someone right now?
If that's available, that'd be great. I'd love not to hang out the rest of the time.
Mr. Tim Smith will, um, meet you outside. Thank you for coming. Uh, next on the agenda is our consent agenda and I will take a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we, uh, approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote.
Sorry, Jared.
I was going to ask if your vote was what you wanted.
Okay.
Voting is closed and the motion to approve the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, next we have the action agenda and first on the action agenda, who's been waiting patiently for this whole meeting, is the Canyon Elementary School Land Trust Amendment and, uh, presented by Principal Leslie Burt.
I know for Terry, that sounds strange to say from Canyon Elementary. Um, I'm new to Canyon Elementary than, um, out at Lewiston, opposite end of the valley. So I've covered, I bookend of the valley. I do want to start real, um, quickly right off the bat since it's the month of giving thanks to just thank the board for your service and all you do to support us in our schools. We, we feel it and we appreciate it. So coming to Canyon, I've had kind of a steep learning curve trying to get caught up and figure out what's going on there. There's about two hundred and fifty more students, so that's a new ballgame for me, um, but it's a great school. Um, Principal Williamson Pryor and the School Community Council had put in our trust land plan to spend some money, um, to take a team down to the Solution Tree PLC Conference. And it's my understanding they've done that quite a few years in a row and upon visiting with the faculty, the majority of the faculty had already attended that conference and as a new administrator, I didn't know the teams very well yet and felt like, um, I needed to get to know them to see where that would be best served. You know, where would, which teachers would, would, um, benefit from that the most. I don't know them well enough or their teams or how they're functioning until I've had an opportunity to work with them. But it did come to my attention that there were a few other needs that they felt were a little more pressing. And so I took those to the School Community Council and, um, they agreed and said that sounded like a great, um, option. Let me give you just a quick rundown. I did share, hopefully you've gotten the document that I put together. They, Stacy and, um, the council had set aside nine thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Seven thousand three hundred and thirty-nine of that were for the conference and two thousand was set aside for the substitute teachers, um, while they were attending. So that left us with just about ninety-three hundred dollars. Um, currently, they have, um, been using trust land funds to purchase a math supplemental software, um, license for Reflex Math, but they, um, piloted, I guess, last spring, uh, Gizmos, which is, um, supplemental software that helps prepare students for science and it's a little more, um, exploratory based and very comparable to the way they're tested on rice. And they felt that that was valuable, used primarily in the upper grades and, um, Reflex, of course, ever the, you know, we'll take your money any way we can, said we'd be happy to bundle that for you. Um, and so that was one thing that the faculty was interested in, um, picking up. And then we also have several, um, classes that are larger than anticipated as well as some, um, technology Chromebooks that need to be replaced. So we have some money already set aside for that, but could definitely add a little bit more to that and, and work to meet our needs. So the amended plan would just add a little bit onto what we were already going to spend for Reflex and then to add more onto our technology and that would make up the difference. So that's our request to make that amendment.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have questions for Principal Burt? Um, I know this is on the action agenda this evening, but we have not heard this before, right? You haven't been here before. So we will, um, wait until the December meeting to approve this after we have some time to read through it and, and all of that stuff.
And send me any questions. I'm happy to, to clarify.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have the approval of the district financial audit report that was presented by Diana and what's his name? I always forget.
Cody Bland.
Uh, at our last meeting. So, uh, I will take a motion on that.
I move that we approve the district financial audit report.
I second it.
Any discussion, questions, comments, concerns? Thanks for all your work, Jared. I hope you're getting more sleep now. Um, I will take, uh, so it's been moved and seconded that we approve the district financial audit report and we will vote on that.
Voting is closed and the motion to approve the district financial audit report passes unanimously.
Thank you, Jared. Next on our agenda is our reports agenda. First up there is the curriculum adoptions, uh, discussion presented by Gary Thomas.
Okay, a couple of weeks ago, uh, you guys had a short discussion on curriculum adoption. And as we look at, uh, legislation, uh, proposed legislation, current legislation, there's a lot of talk right now about curriculum in schools and who should have some input and some say on that. And you as a board are responsible for some of that. So what we thought, Superintendent asked me to spend just a few minutes this evening to talk about what our current practices are, kind of what we do. And then also I'd like you to know that we currently have a committee together, uh, to come up with, uh, curriculum adoption policy. And Kathy, I believe, is helping with that committee, but we have Brittany Foster and Paula Hull, who are both elementary and secondary curriculum specialists for us in the district. I sent some documents, uh, to you and you may or may not have had a chance to look at those, but the, the one document right here, this is just an example of what we did, for example, with our last elementary language arts, uh, curriculum adoption. We start off with an RFP where we ask companies who are interested in, uh, sharing what curriculum they have with us to send that to us. I think we had about fifteen different companies send all of their materials to us. We had a committee at the district level that went through those and narrowed that down, uh, to about six or eight. We then had those companies, uh, that we chose come in and actually make presentations to our committee at the district level. And at that point, we narrowed that down to four, uh, different curriculums. And you can see those four listed at the bottom, uh, under the different kind of colors there. At that point, you can see, we brought in, uh, quite a team. We had, this was a second through sixth grade adoption, so we had teachers from second through sixth grade. We also had teachers from every, every elementary school, so that we were pretty well represented there. We also had a principal, uh, or two that we included in on this. We then went through the curriculum that these four companies had presented and what I've also included is the rubric that we followed. So that, we went through to make sure it aligned with our standards and everything else that goes down through that process. And this is a, a three-page document. It's actually double-sided, so it's about a five-page document that you can see how thoroughly we went through that in order to, to make, uh, a recommendation and, and ultimately to purchase our curriculum. So that's kind of the process we go through there. What we'd like to do in the future though, and part of our policy is, we anticipate is that we will include some board members to serve on this committee and be a part of that and go through the next rubric with us. We also would like to maybe, uh, invite a couple of parents to be on that committee too, so that we have a little more representation. In addition to a major adoption though, teachers oftentimes need to find some supplementary, uh, materials to, to kind of help them out. What you also have, uh, what I shared with you is this document and this is what a teacher, this is actually put out by the state and this is what a teacher needs to do in order to choose a curriculum that hasn't been adopted at a district level. And you can see that they are supposed to align with the current state's, uh, statute and policy, align to the standards, uh, is it relevant, is it evidence-based, uh, is it accessible without bias, uh, and limited to advertising, accurate information, developmentally appropriate, um, and, uh, access to resources that do not require sharing personal information of our students. So this is a checklist that teachers, so it might be, let's say, a fourth grade team says, hey, our science that we use just doesn't have quite enough. We'd like a little bit more. They might find something, they then need to go through this, check off all these lists, then share that with their building administrator and say, it meets all of this criteria and here's how we would like to use it. And that gives the principal an opportunity to take a look at it all, so. And that's actually put out by the state. I'm not too concerned with the, the push right now with curriculum and, and everybody having eyes on it. One thing that I think our district does well is we have an aligned and articulated and coordinated curriculum from the district and that makes it easier for us to, to know what's happening in our classrooms. Um, some districts are a little more of the Wild West and schools themselves choose the curriculum and even within schools, just the teachers are choosing that, but, but we have a, a little more systematic approach to the curriculum. And that is part of why we are as, as successful as we are. We have students who may move, not only principals that move from Lewiston to Canyon, but we also have students that move from maybe the north end to the south or vice versa. And we decided long ago it wasn't fair for a student to move from one school, show up at another school and not get the same opportunity and the same level of education. And, and having that articulated, coordinated and aligned curriculum has helped us do that. So our next step will be to get this policy, uh, in a draft form and, and bring that to the board for approval. And I'm not exactly sure how long that'll work, but that's, it's in the process, so. Any questions that I can help you with?
Could I ask one question? Um, you know, Terry, as you indicated, there are things in the works on the legislative side for this coming, um, and I, and I think you may have already kind of spoken to this, but, um, do you anticipate any wrinkles during the new legislative session that would, that would, um, I guess, cause you to have to alter, you know, the, this, this policy that you've created?
Um, I don't think so. I, I do have a fourteen-page document of one proposal that I know is already in draft form and it's, you know, uh, so we'll be looking at that. We'll also, and to be honest, it may be wise that it takes us a couple of months to get through this process rather than hurry and have something put together before that legislative session ends. It might be wise to, to have a nice rough draft, let that legislative session finish and, and just see if anything else goes into law and make sure that our policy aligns with it. Probably would be, be wise. Probably would be wise.
The, so I listened to the education interim committee meeting yesterday and your friend, Senator, is most insistent that parents and school board members participate, but especially parents, participate in curriculum selection. And that seems to be a general theme among quite a few legislators. So that our district is going to add some board members and parents to their selection crew is probably the best move for compliance in the future. Cause that seems to be the, what, what the rumblings are in the current legislation movie or that, that we've seen so far.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, Gary. Next, we have a thrilling monthly financial report from October 2022, given by Jared Black.
Yeah, I just, as a point of order, I want to say it is thrilling, actually.
I'm not.
Yeah, I assumed President Rhodes was being serious in your comment, so, yeah.
Just want to make sure you know we're sincere.
Are we handing out candy bars as well again?
Jared, you got up your game after Diana was here.
I just don't have a budget for that. I'll work on it. I've attached the financial report with, with the standard reports for the month of October. To be honest, there weren't a lot of financial highlights per se in October. It was a pretty normal month. But just a couple of things of note, it's good to see that we're getting some additional revenues from interest earnings because the rates are increasing quite dramatically. And that helps in some ways and hurts in some ways depending on what we're talking about. But in terms of our interest revenues, those are going up quite a bit right now. We also had a financial training earlier this month with our administrators that I believe went well. We had quite a few from the business office present different topics and feel like it was a good use of time for those who attended that. We also, earlier today, held our, I'd say in person, but it was over Zoom, Title I visit with the folks from USB and that went really well. Gary and, and Robin and Robin and Paula and Superintendent and some others were involved in that, but it went well. We've also submitted to USB all of the requested documentation for our school fees audit, so that is in process and going well thus far. I did hear from quite a few employees who, who've just expressed thanks. I don't know, maybe Superintendent will talk about this as well, but for the mid-November salary augmentation that was sent out earlier this week. So we just appreciate the school board being supportive of that. And that's what I have to report unless there are any questions.
See, that was thrilling. Thank you very much, Jared. Any questions? No? Okay. Moving on to board member reports. Any board member reports?
I have one, Terry. I attended the Legislative Affairs meeting this week at Bridgelen. Senator Wilson was there and Representative Peterson, Senator Sandel was going to be, but he didn't make it. But Senator Wilson was very positive about the surplus and being on top of the list was teacher salaries, mental health, water issues, and the food pantry. So I think Senator Wilson is on board with getting what the teachers deserve and the people in the education. So he thought, he spoke very positive of getting some help for teachers, so hopefully he'll go on.
Thank you. Anyone else have a board member report?
I do.
Kathy?
This really isn't a report. It's just kind of some information. For anybody on the board who would like to get their, what's it called? Master Boards completed, it's due by the 30th. And you can just go online to.
Power Up.
Power Up and complete the questionnaire there and do the little training sessions. And so there's still time to do it if you would like to. After that, it's probably too late. So if you have any questions, ask either me or Terry. Anybody else finished it yet?
Just partway through.
Okay. So, and, or Jeff. Okay. And then the second thing is after our meeting, excuse me, next week, we'll have our Christmas party at my home. And if you would like to bring something, we have four categories and you can tell me after the meeting who would like to do it. Rolls, set salad, green salad, and fruit or fruit salad. I have ordered beef tenderloins and potatoes all grotten and chocolate tart, tort, which is all gluten-free. Okay? So that's the, kind of the main course of it. And we're just excited to be able to get together with your spouses, with our spouses, and have a fun time. That's it.
And even though Kathy said that's next week, it is on December 1st.
Thank you. Yep. We won't be doing it on Thanksgiving.
You don't want us at your house on Thanksgiving? All right. Any other board member reports?
Not a report, but a question. Just to clarify now, on the 30th, we will not be doing school visits. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
We won't. We'll doing, we'll be doing a presentation to the legislators about what we're, what we're doing with our, the increase in funding that they gave us in the last legislative session and what's happening in our schools without having them visit schools, which is too bad because it's a lot easier when we just take them there.
Yeah. And this activity will qualify us on the monthly requirement.
Right. That's what Logan, Logan's hosting this year and that's what their school district requested that we do. So Steve, are you presenting that at that luncheon?
Decided for sure who's going to be presenting, but we're working on it.
Okay, thank you. Cause you needed one more thing to do at the district office. Sorry about that, but thanks for coming through for us.
We're fine.
Anyone else? Oh, I, well, I'll move to the board president report and report that I went to the UHSAA first meeting for reconfiguration, no, realignment.
Realign.
Realignment for Jeff today. It was, I was glad for the opportunity. I have not attended a UHSAA Board of Trustees meeting before and it was very educational. It was especially interesting to see the, the very, uh, the large number of large men in the gallery who were there to make sure it all happened, all came out how they wanted it to. So anyway, that was sort of fun. Roger knows what I'm talking about. And one of them was our own Doug Snow and he was happy with the results. So all four of, right now, all four of our schools are sitting in the 4A classification still. But Logan School District has requested that they move to 3A. And since they are what they call a bubble school, so they're right on the, explain that, Jeff.
It could go either way. They're just right in the.
Based on attendance.
Yeah.
I, I mean, student population. So because they're on the border of the, the break between 3A and 4A, they've requested to play 3A instead of 4, which will be rough for our region or, so Principal Snow tells me. But Bear River is also still in 4A, so anyway. But there should be enough schools in 4A this year that there are, that our kids won't just have to go to St. George to play.
So they're adding more 4A teams? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Cause last, the last two years, if my understanding was right, the last two years there have only been 13 schools in 4A classification. And right now, as the division sits that they did today, there are 25. So it would allow for four regions instead of only two in 4A.
However, the, the dust hasn't settled yet, right?
That's right. However, Jeff has to go to a meeting on the 8th of December where all the schools who are bubble schools can appeal and ask to play up if they want to.
And that'll be interesting because that's what happened last time. They came in and requested, so that's why we had a small region.
Just throw them off by asking if we could go 7A.
It attracts a lot of interest.
It does. It was, it was fascinating. Thanks for that opportunity, Jeff. I'm glad you're going to the next one.
You saved me, so thank you.
The other thing, I'll add to Kathy's report about the master boards certification that if you have already done levels one, two, three, and four, then you just keep doing four again, just so you know. And Monday is the Cache Education Foundation Christmas Tree Jubilee fundraiser party extravaganza. And Jeff and Kressel are going to attend that as the board representatives for us. And you have a place for them at a Cache County School District table?
Yep.
And so you, I hope you're not irritated by all of the forwarding of emails that I'm doing to you all, but.
Not at all.
No, it's good.
I want you to be aware of the emails that I keep, that I'm receiving and responding to so that you know what, what the board, what I'm saying for all of you. And especially this last, I think the last one I sent you was about the list of audits that our district is being required to go through at the moment because, or for the state. This just feels like a real heavy lift. And so, I mean, like Jared just gave in his financial report, they have put together all of the, the information that the, the fee audit, school fees audit requires, but all of that just takes so much time for, from our district people to cover what the state wants. So I hope that I, you weren't offended that I sent that email, but if you were, I'm sorry.
Terry, I think the letter you sent was very good. I thought you did a good job, yeah.
Kevin thought I was a little too forward and forthright, but I just, I just think that if we don't tell them, they don't know. I mean, because down there, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing. And so they don't, I mean, if it's not an audit from their department, they don't know how many other audits were, were being subjected to.
Did, did they respond to that considerably?
No. But Tim talked to.
All of them, right after your emails, I had, I was transferring documents on the latest email. Barbie said that a deputy superintendent, they'd already discussed it, would be getting ahold of you, Terry. So I did get a little more insight too. I was all day at a CTE finance training at the state office today and I did not realize this. They walked us through a risk index that they have on every school district. And one of the big factors is for at least CTE, I don't know if they have a risk factor for every school district, is number of findings they've had to pass. And one of their big ones is new personnel, whether that be a new business administrator or new CTE director, that they look at those programs closer to help, help them kind of understand what they need to be doing. So at least I know in CTE, with me being new and Jared being new, we're in the high-risk category. And so we'll probably be getting some more audits, which actually help me to learn what I'm supposed to be doing, so.
And Sid Dixon did talk to me today about it and she was grateful to know. She hasn't had any other district ever do that before and, and she is aware of the lift and the load. Probably can't do much about it this year, but we'll work on it. So she is, she's aware. She's cognizant.
Well, I just know the only, only way things change is if we let them know. And it just feels like not the best use of our district resources to have to be fielding so many all at once. So anyway, so I'll just keep sending you emails until you tell me not to.
I appreciate them. Thanks for doing it.
Yep, you're welcome. Okay, Superintendent Report.
Okay, a couple of items. One is it's a, it's a great month for giving thanks and we just sent out a email to our support people on National Support Day. And I don't think I've ever received as many thank you's just for some words. And they are really, really top-notch people and do us a wonderful job. We, our main focus is education and instruction, but without all the other things that take place in a given school day that are mainly done by our educational support people, we wouldn't be able to have good instruction in the classroom. The bonus that we sent out wasn't as large as I'd like it to have been, but I think it, I know it had an impact because again, I have never received so many responses and they weren't the typical response that this is really going to help us for Christmas. It's just, this is really going to help us just get through daily life. And they were, they were extremely grateful, so. And then for my last item, I have some prepared remarks. This is the right time. While this is one of the most difficult decisions I've ever made after 48 years in education, and I just figured out 804 school board meetings. In 27 years in the Cache County School District, I will be retiring, I will be retiring at the end of this school year on June 30th, 2023. I express my gratitude to you as current school board members. You are truly dedicated to public education. You have been supportive of our teachers, our students, staff, and have put your trust in me for all these years. I would like to express my gratitude to all 24 board members that I've had the privilege to work with in the school district. I give special thanks to Brett Parker, Brent Parker, Dennis Jackson, Dr. John Bailey, Kenneth Wade, and Jacqueline White, who hired me in 1996. What a great opportunity they provided for me and my family to come back to Cache Valley. I am confident that you, as our present school board, will find just the right person to succeed me. I wish to express my sincere love and gratitude to my wife and family. Without their love and support over the years, I would not have been able to have this career that I have truly enjoyed. And I have a copy of that for everybody and also another little card for you. And I just wish you the very best as you continue to work in public ed. And I would say this, our core mission is educating students and our core value is the quote I give all the time, counted as the greatest of virtues to faithfully educate the children of others. And you need to remember that that's the only reason we exist, because parents trust us with their kids and their kids are their most precious thing they have in their life. And we need to make our decisions every day based on how best to honor that trust. And if there's ever a. based on how best to honor that trust. And if there's ever a place in this country where democracy works, it's on the school board level. And not only the 24 of you that I've worked with in this district, but I've been in two other districts, and then I've been to many national school board conventions. And I just love the fact that the farmer and the cowboy and the plumber walk in and sit next to the doctor and the lawyer. And they're all there, basically giving of their time, because they believe in public education. And public education is what gives us a public. And without a public, we won't be able to operate and exist as a country. So, thank you for a wonderful experience. I have, just to help you maybe get started, I've got a copy of two announcements of superintendents in other districts. I think you ought to take at least a look at them, and then use your US School Boards Association. And Richard, he can guide you through this whole process. And God bless you as you go through it. Thank you.
Wow. Any comments after that? Don't go.
I got to. It's time.
You told me a few months ago that we'd go out together if I'd run again.
And you're welcome to ride side saddle with me if you'd like.
You've been great, and you will be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here, and we appreciate your steady leadership, Steve.
Thank you.
For 27 years, and you've taken our district from a place where it was not so great to a place where everybody wants to be.
Thank you.
And we appreciate that, because it makes our jobs so much easier. And so, with that, and seeing that we've reached the end of our agenda, we will adjourn.